Okay, I'm ready to get started, you guys. We're gonna gavel in this regular council meeting of May 18. Another Rona Zoom meeting, so go ahead Gordon and take roll call please. Okay, Mayor Loughlin here. Councilperson Sexton. Can you hear me Jerry?
Jerry, you're muted.
There we go. Here. Okay, councilperson Miller.
Here.
Councilperson Dean.
Here.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Here.
Councilperson Stulman.
Here.
Alright. We're gonna jump right into a guest speaker. Who is, it looks like Ben Evans from Unum Insurance.
Actually, he's from Rely On Insurance. Unum is the company that's going to.
He's gonna chat about our long-term, short-term, and life insurance employee benefits. So, go ahead Ben, if you can hear us, hear me.
Yep, I sure can.
Call you somewhere.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks for having me tonight, even if it is virtually. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and explain kind of what Gordon and I have been working behind the scenes for a little while here.
Everybody hear him?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
Go ahead.
Gordon and I have been working behind the scenes, just putting this together a little bit, and we finally got to a place where we thought it would be appropriate to share with you guys and get your guys' feedback. In terms of putting this in place for a 7-1 effective date for all the City of West Branch employees. So Gordon, were you able to forward the proposal for the members to see? Do you guys have that in front of you?
Yes, I did forward that.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yep, and so I will, I'm just going to walk through that proposal for you and obviously answer any questions. You know, as we go through it, if you have a question, please feel free to just stop me. I'm used to being interrupted, so whatever works for you guys, that will work best for me. So the carrier that, we approached a broad number of carriers in terms of trying to get the best affordable price when it came down to it. Unum, Rely On Standard and Principal were the three that came in the most competitive out of roughly seven to eight that we tested the market with. We decided to move forward with Unum strictly because of price, and I would say candidly that, you know, when it comes to voluntary benefits, I think that price is gonna be the number one thing. So Unum was chosen for that reason. And to start, in terms of the three benefits that we're looking at, short-term disability is the first one on page two. Basically, the 10,000-foot view of short-term disability is the ability for any City of West Branch employee to regain lost income because of a disability that happens either, well, it would happen off the job, because if it happened on the job, that would be taken care of by workers' comp insurance. So any disability, whether it's an injury, a physical injury, a sickness, a mental health issue, whatever the case might be, short-term disability would kick in to the tune of 60% of their normal wages, up to a weekly maximum, weekly maximum of $1,000. This is 100% paid by the city. There is an elimination period, so typically the elimination period lines up or coincides with what, from a PTO standpoint, what accruals are typical. So obviously, the shorter the elimination period, the more expensive the policy will be. So if we had a 14 or a 15-day elimination period, the price might be a little bit different, but we chose a seven-day, just trying to match it up as best as we could with what a typical City of West Branch employee would have from a PTO standpoint. So that would be the elimination period on day seven of an injury or day seven of a sickness. They would be entitled to file a short-term disability claim, which we could handle from a claims administration standpoint. And then they would be eligible for the weekly benefit all the way up until, I believe it's 12 weeks. Any questions on the short-term disability?
I do.
Yes.
Is that any injury at home, anywhere else, or is it on-the-job injury?
No, no one.
Nope, yeah, so any non-occupational injury, obviously occupational injury would be taken care of by workers' comp insurance. So anything outside of their normal day-to-day occupational tasks would qualify for a short-term disability claim.
Seven days seems awfully short in my mind, but what do I know, I guess?
Would the premiums be cheaper if we stretch that seven days out to say 14 or 21?
Yeah, we did, and we looked at a couple of different scenarios. In fact, I think Gordon, one of the proposals that we saw was 14 days. But I'll tell you, you know, in the groups that we work with, so Rely On Insurance is formerly A W Elton Briscoe, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, and Iowa City, longstanding insurance company, we represent quite a few groups, I'll say, in Johnson County and surrounding counties for that matter. I would say on average, 75% of the groups that have a short-term disability policy have a seven-day waiting period. Now, that being said, you know, if we want to make amendments to this, we certainly can, but I would say seven days is pretty typical from a short-term disability standpoint.
The only reason I say that is we, the employees have a pretty generous sick package. Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong, do they get four hours every pay period?
That is, I think it's, yeah, four hours, but we want to address changing that after this is implemented. So there will not, eventually will reduce the amount of sick time offered, and this will be taking the place of as much sick time as they get.
Okay.
Is that seven days of injury, is that unable to work at all for seven days straight?
Yes, that's correct.
A full day, seven full days?
Seven full, seven full workdays, yep.
Okay, move on.
Yep, so the next, moving to the long-term disability, this would run concurrent with any, so if there was a disability that happened on January 1st, for the sake of easy math, and that 12-week elimination, or that 12-week short-term disability policy reached its peak, or reached its end, I should say, this is, the long-term disability would run on the backside of that and would catch any any claim that would exceed that 12-week elimination, or excuse me, 12-week benefit period for a short-term disability claim. So basically, the minimum hours, well, minimum hours for, there's a 90-day elimination period to run, coincide with that, again, 60% of the benefit period, or excuse me, 60% of the earnings, they would be eligible for that, up to a monthly, again, monthly, different from short-term disability, maximum benefit is a $5,000 monthly maximum. And they would be eligible for this benefit, there would be income checks throughout, but, you know, for instance, a long-term disability claim could take you all the way up until social security. And so they would obviously check in to make sure that that isn't being abused. But if, you know, an injury is the result of you being disabled or not being able to work for the majority of your life, that would, this would pay for that claim. Any questions on that?
Does anyone else have a problem with this Zoom?
Tom, I wonder if it's me, I just shared screen, so you should be able to see what he's talking about.
Well, don't do that, I've got the agenda up.
Yeah, Redmond, every councilperson has the agenda on their tablet.
Okay.
Rather see the people, I guess, the council. I don't know about the press.
There.
You should have the agenda. Okay, any questions for Ben so far? Okay.
Those rates are locked in for two years?
That's correct, it's a two-year rate lock on this. So the last benefit that I'll just touch on here, and then I can open it up for more broad questions or anything else that you guys want to chat about, but is the group term life policy, group term life and accidental death and dismemberment is what AD&amp;D insurance stands for. And so this is a, you know, God forbid, if this were to ever happen, a $50,000 benefit for the loss of any life of a City of West Branch employee. It's a flat $50,000 benefit for every employee. Gordon and I tweaked this a little bit, we looked at a couple of different options in terms of, we could do it as salary, we could do it at one-time annual salary, we could, you know, with a maximum on that, but this is ultimately, you know, what we decided, or what Gordon decided to put forth. And so that's the $50,000 benefit for all full-time employees. If there were to be an accidental death or dismemberment, meaning a loss of a limb, that not only would obviously trigger a short-term disability or a long-term disability claim, but would trigger an AD&amp;D claim as well, which would be the ability to pay out, you know, on essentially all three of these policies. So these are portable, portable policies, so if a person wants to take something with them, they can. There is an age reduction schedule, so essentially, if you're 65 and older and you're still a City of West Branch employee, you would be eligible for 65% of that $50,000, your second reduction would come at $70,000, and so on and so forth, up until, up until retirement.
Presently, our benefit is $15,000, so this is a substantial increase in the life insurance.
Would this replace that $15,000?
Yes. And that is also currently entirely employer-paid also.
One other thing I'll just touch on, oftentimes, or sometimes we'll get the question, can an employee buy more, we call it a voluntary buy-up or voluntary, you know, voluntary additional life insurance for employees? If they'd like to exceed that $50,000 and say, you know, buy an extra 50 or buy an extra 100, would they be able to? The answer to that is, we have to have a certain number enrolled in that in order to roll that out. That's something that was sprung upon us by Unum, kind of at the last minute, Gordon and I touched on it or talked about it last week. Certainly, I'm not a big fan of that, because there's no way to anticipate enrollment until we have this in front of the employees, and we don't know how many employees are going to take it until we have an opportunity to meet with them. So we're looking into that a little bit more, there's nothing set in stone yet on the voluntary, you know, on the voluntary buy-up, excuse me. But Gordon and I are gonna continue to have a discussion about that and try to find a solution that is fair to all the employees across the board.
Okay. Pretty simple and straightforward, it seems like.
I have a question, and I must be dumber than I look. So basically, I added all this up, and it's about an annual cost of $7,500 for all three of these, for these things.
That's, yep, yep.
For employee, or is that total?
No, that's total, that's an annual total for all 15 employees. Hey, it's a fair question.
Alright, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
I thought the same thing, Colton.
I thought it meant total, it said 15 lives, but I just didn't know, I just wanted to double-check.
No, that's fair, that's a great question.
Me, guys.
It's a great question.
This is guaranteed for two years, you said?
That's correct, these rates are guaranteed for two years. I'll tell you, it's, I've been in this business for 12 years, I've never seen above a 2% increase, even outside of this, for a voluntary standpoint, obviously, health and dental and vision, those are separate, when it comes to these lines of business, typically very steady, very stable, I've never seen anything above a 2% increase, you know, across the board. So, you know, while it's 75 now, and people try to, you know, anticipate inflation or anticipate down the road, I'll tell you that, you know, I might eat my words on this, but typically, these are very, very stable products, you know, from an ancillary carrier standpoint. So you could, I would bank on these rates for, you know, two years and then some.
So Gordon, did we run this by any managers besides Redmond?
No, I was told to get some quotes, we did got quotes. And first, we talked to multiple agents before, we didn't talk to just one agent, we talked to several agents. And there were, some of the agents, what they proposed was extremely high. I thought this was the best proposal that we came up with. Now, you can spend more money, if you want to do that, get more insurance, but this has substantial improvement over what the employees have.
Yeah, I would just add that this was part of our goal-setting process, so in the lead-up to the goal-setting, and then obviously part of the goal-setting, directors have been a part of those discussions, but we haven't really talked directly, particularly with the life insurance buy-add-ons and things of that nature, those little things have been changing, we haven't talked to employees to really know how interested they're going to be. We know that we have had one employee previously that up insurance coverage. We don't know how many more would like to do that, we assume that the one that has done it before wants to continue that. So the goal is to, like Ben said, work through those and figure out what the solution is, if it is to find other employees that want to do it, or if there's some other solution, we just hadn't worked through all those yet.
I have a question, this really doesn't have anything to do with the insurance guy, this is more of an internal question. And maybe it should be addressed more towards Gordon. Gordon, is there any way you can find out what we pay annually for the life insurance policy that we have now?
Well, we pay about $74 a month, so 12 times 74 is what we pay.
So 900 bucks a year, so we're looking at about a $6,500 increase.
Well, but this, that is just for life insurance and accidental death. This now has the disability, which is.
Let me finish my question, and then maybe it'll all start making sense. So if we're gonna, now we're gonna restructure the sick leave also, correct?
Yes, that's the next, after we get this implemented, then we'll have to do that.
So I guess my idea would be is, let's try to restructure that, obviously, we're probably not gonna be able to get $6,500 worth of savings out of it, but if we can restructure our sick leave to also help offset the cost of this, this would make this a lot easier to manage, wouldn't you agree?
I would say you are correct, yes.
Okay. But that's just all I was getting at, is let's figure out where we can try to offset the cost of this.
And Colton, I would also add, this is one of the few things that we also get a direct levy on. So this is also something that doesn't necessarily impact the general fund like others do.
What have we been doing with that levy up to this point?
Well, it has built up a little savings, that's why we thought it was a good time, obviously, once we start this, it becomes an ongoing expense to that levy, to our operations. But we do have a little bit of a cushion built up, and so it's not going to affect taxpayers immediately, not probably for quite some time.
How much, how much is a cushion?
Oh, several thousand, tens of thousands of dollars.
Tens of thousands? Have we been levying for this before, Redmond?
Yes.
Fringe benefits.
Yes.
So that's directly levable, fringe benefits are, it's one of those line items on the 164-dash state, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Ben? I guess hearing none, we're gonna take this up as a resolution later on, I don't know why we're doing it last, but stick around Ben, or not?
Thank you, Ben, for your time this evening.
Of course, no, and if there are questions, obviously Gordon has my contact information, happy to answer anything if something comes up after the fact. I'll jump off here and catch up with Gordon tomorrow, thanks for your time, guys.
Alright, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment, there's no one here in the room. Item F will be the consent agenda, which will be to approve the city council meeting minutes of May 4th. A Class C beer permit renewal for Parkside Petroleum, DBA Parkside BP. Three West Branch Fire Department appointments, and the claims report, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Then I do have one question, give me a motion someone, Jerry?
Yeah, so moved.
Alright. One second.
I'll second it, Nick.
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, so, okay. Any questions, I just have one, we bought a CD for.
Okay, the CD was a permanent cemetery fund CD that had matured at Green State Credit Union, and I got a better rate than they offered, about $325 a year more at Hills Bank. And so that matured, the CD matured, we cashed it in, money went in our bank account, and then we wrote a check to purchase the new one. $95,000 something.
Okay, the auditors are okay with doing it that way?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my only question. Any comments on the consent agenda? Alright Gordon, let's vote then, please, to approve the consent agenda.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Councilperson Stulman?
Yes.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Alright. Item one is a public hearing regarding amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Is there anyone on Zoom or in the room, which there is none, to speak on this public hearing amending the budget for a minor reason? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we'll go into item two, which is Resolution 1898, amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th. Give me a motion someone, and then I'm gonna have Gordon give us a brief explanation, explain it to me, but it's pretty simple, give me a motion someone.
Move.
Second. Someone? Jerry?
Jerry?
Yeah. I heard him.
Okay.
Okay, this is just a estimated shortfall in the Streets Fund, I believe.
That is correct, we're probably gonna be around $15,000 short. In our audit report for the year ended June 30, 2019, I was $100 short in one budget, and they put a note in our report that is to be issued this week. I didn't want to have another audit comment about failing to amend the budget and exceeding that. So I put in extra money, in all honesty, I want to avoid getting in trouble with the auditors. We're going to be short, I'm guessing, around $15,000 in Public Works, I put in 39 just because if things go wacky. We could be a little short in community and economic development, but I don't think we're going to have a problem there. General government, again, I just put a little money in just because we're going to be close, but I'd rather not go over budget.
So this is money coming from the general fund into the Streets Fund?
No, the Streets Fund, the Streets Fund actually.
Public Works Fund.
Yeah, the Public Works has road use tax money, it will not affect the general fund at all. The road use tax fund has money that was not appropriated, it's money that.
That's the 15, it wasn't appropriated.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have, we have a substantial fund, substantial amount of money in the Streets Fund, but some of it has to carry over next year, and some of it we had initially planned on paying off the College Street, Second Street project. But because of the situation with the reduction in taxes, we're not going to spend that money, we'll just leave it in there for now. So the money will come out of road use tax, they'll spend it, and it will, it will not affect the general fund.
Okay, so the $15,000 shortfall estimated, why is that?
They spent more money on salt, I think it went over budget like $7,000.
We explained that last.
There was some salaries.
Okay, yeah, that was explained to us last time.
Then there's a transfer here of money, I didn't make the transfer when I had, when I should have, I missed it. That's the $50,000 transferring.
From TIF.
From TIF to the general fund. That was a payment that we requested in December of, or November of 2019.
And where does that TIF money go?
That goes to the general fund.
Reimbursing the general.
Yeah, I guess that, we requested that money in 2018, I suppose.
Okay, so transfer of $50,000 to reimburse the general fund of a TIF payment in $39,250 into Public Works from a road use tax. From a road use fund.
Yes.
Probably due to the extra salt that I had to buy, and there's.
And some.
Salt prices went way up last winter, if I remember. Or was that two years ago?
I can't say, I think he just changed the contract and.
Changed the contract. Okay, is that clear to everybody? Okay, is that clear to everybody?
Fine by me.
All right, so we got a motion to approve the amended budget. Any other comments? All right, Gordon, go ahead, let's vote.
Okay, councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Councilperson Stuhlmann?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
The next item is ordered 776, amending chapters 105 and 106, code of ordinances of the city regarding solid waste control and rates. I guess before I entertain a a motion, I'd like to explain that there's a paragraph in here, item, Amendment 4, item C. I think we asked Kevin to write this in here. And we're gonna decide whether to adopt it or not. So whoever motions can keep it, or this is the exemption of people who have access to a city, their own dumpster. Last time we asked for two options from Kevin, and he put this in here, like we asked him to, but whoever makes the motion can say they want it stricken out or left in for now, and then we can talk about it. Give me a motion, somebody on ordered 776 of solid waste and control rates. If that makes any sense. Somebody?
I'll make a motion.
Jody, second.
All right, Jody, Jerry? Okay.
Do we still have Kevin?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Was I right on that, Kevin?
Yes, you were right. That C is the one provision I put in there.
Okay, so so up for vote now, or up for discussion would be with that exemption included, any owner and or tenant of a residential premises who certifies in writing that the, that owner tenant has use of a dumpster will not be charged a monthly solid waste fee. They will not receive a container. I just want people to know that's what's in there. Is there any other discussion? I see we have Steve of Johnson County Refugees here. Do you have anything to say, Steve?
The only, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I guess in the other 15 or 16 contracts we have, everybody is included in the fee and really hasn't been exempted for that, and I would, for any reasons like that, just because they have a dumpster, I just, I guess I'm not sure how that would, that would go, and if, you know, how many other issues would come up that people would want to be exempted as we go down the road? You know, if we start exempting for certain particular reasons like that, so even I have sons and I have employees that live in North Liberty, and they're, they have to pay the fee and get a cart just like, you know, everybody else. So that's the only thing I got to say.
And they can take their trash to work, right?
Yeah, they could bring their trash to work, but they've gotta participate in the, and get a cart just like everybody else. So, you know, it's just an example I have of, you know, I have an employee that lives in the West Branch, and he would, he would could bring his stuff to work, and he wouldn't be able to. I would think he would have to get a cart like everybody else, so I guess, so that's all I have to say.
Yeah, my question to that would be, has it ever been brought up to these other communities?
It has just, it has just in one, and basically I said the same thing as I just said there, and they chose not to, you know, that everybody's included, even if they have a business and are able to take it there, so.
Okay, Steve, so you're not in favor of this because does it complicate things for you?
Probably not as much as it would your staff on, on who's, you know, who's, you know, who's getting charged and who's not, and I guess it's, it's not that, it doesn't cause me any, anymore really, so it's just the, to one is the, a couple of things, the loss of revenue if we keep coming up with different groups of people that, that wanna opt out, and pretty soon we're only picking up, we're half the town type of thing, so in order to run the trucks, we've gotta go buy everybody's house, you know, anyways, so.
Okay, Kevin, I saw Kevin raise your hand.
Yeah, I wanted to point out one, I agree with Steve, I don't think I represent any communities that have an exemption. I also put in the packet a simple code section that talks about discrimination and rates, and it basically says you can't charge a discriminatory rate, discriminatory rate, and the state auditor, a couple cities had different rates for senior citizens, and the state auditor dinged them on that, and so those cities have had to go back and change. So I'm not sure what the state auditor would think of this exemption, because we're not charging everybody the same amount here. So I just brought that up just as another, another thought there.
Well, not charging everybody the same amount, meaning every resident, not charging business owners, which are property owners also. So you're a little bit concerned of an auditor?
Well, we use the state auditor, so we could, we could, if the council wants to go forward with it like this, we could ask them to give us an opinion, because they, I'd rather have them give us the opinion before we did it than after.
Yes.
So, and like I said, Mary, City of Marion had, was dinged by the state auditor for senior citizens having different rates. This one, you're getting charged by the can for each person based on what they asked for. Everybody gets charged, even if they don't want to use it.
I don't see that as a different rate.
Well, I, yeah, but I mean, your discriminatory rate is, if, if I was, if a devil's advocate, it'd be you're charging people zero who have access to a dumpster in the city, so I'm not, I would just ask, if we want to keep it in there, I would just ask the auditor before we go to the third reading, because we use them for the, we don't want to get dinged on it if that, if they have a problem with it. If they don't, that's the only, that's the only problem I have. I want to make sure that we've covered that fact.
The one question I would have, and it would probably be for Leslie, is how many businesses in town would we be looking at?
How many residents?
How many, how many residents in town have a business that could use their own dumpster? I mean, we talking five, 10, even, or less or more?
Well, except for the ordinance doesn't say business owner. The ordinance doesn't say business owner in West Branch, it says person with access to a dumpster. So how do you put a number on how many people have access to a dumpster in West Branch?
Maybe this, maybe this, maybe this would add some clarity. Maybe this would add some clarity to this. Kevin put in the packet that $15,000 annually comes out of the General Fund to pay, to go to the Sier County Waste Commission. That's $15,000 out of the General Fund. If we, anyone that spends a water bill gets, will get charged, charged for that. Now, these people that have these dumpsters and aren't paying for a garbage can outside their house, they're not really contributing to this $15,000 annually from the General Fund to go to Sier County Waste Commission. So basically, the way I look at it is, if you spend, you spend a water meter, you're gonna get, you're gonna, you're gonna have to pay for garbage pickup. Does that make any sense?
Well, actually, if you pay property taxes, you pay part of that $15,000.
Well, we're gonna talk about that, Roger.
Right, I get that. And that's not even up for, in the ordinance, that's not in the ordinance, we can talk about it after this.
It's presented now just so that we could get direction if we want to put it into the ordinance. So it's not in it right now, but that's something we should consider if we're going to before the third reading. I saw Leslie around, I.
She's in the house.
I asked, I asked her that question, and I think the number is maybe between 15 to 20, or I wasn't sure if that was all people who were inquiring about it, or if they would actually make use of that exemption, but it was, oh, I think I see her head.
Popped up here. I've received probably about 20 requests for exemptions. They weren't all from business owners. I have received only one person, well, I should say, one initial person when we first discussed about having a, having them supply us with a copy of a bill that they pay for a dumpster. Only one person has done that because from those initial conversations. But there's probably at least, again, I don't always know who all lives here and who has a business until they call me. So I've gotten probably five people, a couple of those people said, well, if I have to have it, just give me the small can. So there, I've got people going both ways, but I have more people saying I have access to a dumpster in Iowa City or where I work. And those are the people, I think it's gonna be hard to say, well, we only allow it for a certain demographic of people and not the others, because I think we're gonna go down that slippery slope of not being fair to everybody. That's gonna make it difficult to explain.
One way to be fair to everyone would be to require a cart. It's one way to be fair. At least in the beginning here, I suppose I would advocate that we at least in the beginning here, we not give the exemption. See how that goes, and then we can always, we can always add it later, it's hard to take it away. And, you know, next year, two years, whatever. That's my thoughts. Anyone else?
I'd like to amend my motion. If I can do that, can I do that, Kevin?
Yes, as long as the second person agrees with you. Whoever seconded, I think it was Jody, maybe?
We're kind of bogged down on this.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the this ordinance with the exception of eliminating paragraph C.
I gotta read paragraph C.
Can't read it?
He's reading it.
Oh.
For C.
Yeah, for C. So Tom would, he's offering an amendment to his motion to eliminate paragraph C, which is.
See where we're at.
I second that.
Okay. So from there, is that the one in blue? Nothing in blue, we don't have any colors.
It, I know which one, it's, it's, it's item under Amendment 4, Part C would be taken out under Tom's motion.
Is everyone clear on what we, what Tom is proposing to strike out of this first reading, and Jody is second? There's no more questions on that particular change in his motion. I'd like to take a vote on the amendment of the motion. Is everyone clear on that? And then we will vote on the motion as a whole to approve the first reading of the, of the ordinance. Any questions? Okay, Gordon's gonna take roll call on, on Tom and Jody's amendment, amendment, striking out the exemption paragraph. Go ahead, Gordon.
Okay. Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Councilperson Stuhlmann?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilperson Sexton?
No.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries then to strike out the exemption paragraph C. If there's any more discussion, I'll hear it. If not, we will proceed with the first reading of this ordinance of solid waste control and rates. Any other discussion? Okay, Gordon, first reading, first reading, we have a motion to approve.
Okay.
Hold on a second, I got something else.
Go ahead.
So does it, in this first reading, have we included the $15,000?
No.
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 No, but that's common, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for consensus after, after you guys vote on it, if we, if you would like me to, to put that in the next reading.
I'm gonna vote no. If, if it's, I'm gonna vote no, because I don't, I don't, I don't want it in there now, now, not ever. So if I can fail it today, you can't put it in there next week, you see? So I, I think that, I think, I understand the whole idea of utilities should pay for utilities. I get that, I understand that completely. But, I mean, at some point, for some of the older people in town and stuff, we're making their garbage rate go up considerably. And so to tack on an extra couple bucks a month to, for what really? We've been paying that for forever, and, and half of us didn't even know we were doing it. So it's not really hurting our general front all that much to continue to, to pay that, at least through this contract or for a couple more years until people can get used to what we're doing here and paying the extra rates. I mean, we subsidize our park and rec department and our police department, none of them departments pay for themselves, and, and we hand money to them. I mean, what does it hurt to put $15,000 of our general fund money into the garbage fund to help relieve the low users that are trying to get in the shaft in this deal, even though there's not really anything we can do about it?
Okay, Colton, but I think you mean you want to vote yes on this particular version.
I'm just gonna vote no on all of them until, until they say they're not gonna put that in anything. Because you, you guys add it to it, it doesn't matter if we vote yes, if we vote yes on this, you can add something to it next week.
Colton, just, just to.
They're planning on it.
Just to clarify, it's, it's not in there now, and I just wanted to get direction from council if I should put it in there. So if, if, if the council's direction, if they don't want it in there, then it will not be in there, and it's not in there now.
I don't want it in there.
Well, let's talk about that right now then, before we vote. Let's get that out.
I, Colton has a good point. I, I think it needs to, he has a good point. There's, this is adding a huge burden to a lot of residents, especially those that say they, they can't even make up one bag a week, so, yeah, I totally agree with Colton.
I agree with you, Colton.
That's three. That's three.
Hey, guys, hey, I'm not saying that in a, in a year or two, we don't do this, but I just think this is bad timing. It's too much change all at once. I think we can, I think we can continue to pay this fifteen thousand dollars for the next year or two and, and then readdress it.
Okay, so Redmond, I'm hearing that for, at least for councilperson, Nick hasn't said would vote against rolling the fifteen thousand dollars into some sort of levy or, or some sort of.
No, I, I hear. So I just wanted, since I wasn't at the last meeting and I know the discussion of every other week service was.
No.
It was the same idea of keeping the prices low for, for the, for the elderly residents. It, it, did I miss something? Is that, is the difference in?
Yeah, because picking up garbage shouldn't be this complicated.
Oh, is the complexity of, of what it would mean?
The consensus now is Redmond to leave the fifteen thousand just where it is in the general fund. Comes up again, we'll deal with it later on, but for right now, it sounds like we want to just leave that alone and vote on this as it stands. Am I, is that right?
That's, that's what I'm hearing.
And just for the record, I agree with everybody else.
Good job, Nick. So.
Waiting for a good time to pop in.
So I'm anticipating that would be a yes vote, or I'm not, I shouldn't. Back to a yes vote, Colton, cuz the fifteen thousand may be out of the question.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna vote now to vote for the first, to approve the first reading as it's written minus the exemption clause. Go ahead, Gordon.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Councilperson Stulman?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
All right. I hope this gets easier after this.
Should be easy.
Okay. Nice job, you guys. Item four, Cubby Park signage. Looks like we got a proposal which matches the Wopsey Park sign and the Dog Park sign. Couple thousand dollars, almost three. Or a bigger one.
Roger, do you want me to talk on this? Okay, so the currently at the other parks, we have the four foot signs and I was asked to get a dip, a bigger one or look for bigger ones at Cubby Park. So I have quotes for a six foot and an eight foot sign. I also this morning did get some potential, potential design and Nick can show that to you guys if you're, if you want. Do you want it to put that on your screen? So you can see the design?
Sure.
Okay. He can.
That must be the back.
Yeah. And, and this is just a mock-up. We can do whatever you want. So then in the official naming, it was Mark World was in there. So that's why we did the, I did the Mark World Memorial Park. But once again, this is just a example. We can do whatever.
I have a thought on the logo. Big Timber had a logo on the side of his truck. It was three trees, I think.
You may be right. I can look at that.
Um, would anyone think about putting the Big Timber logo thing?
Oh, the Big Timber logo is almost like the West City of West Branch logo.
Yeah, well, that might not be a bad idea either.
Except I thought we spent all that, remember all the thinking and, and the think tanks and the slideshows to pick this City of West Branch logo and what colors it was gonna be? I mean, it was a.
Well, this is easy.
Long process that to develop, to develop this logo so we could do branding of our city.
Actually, I thought there was talk about putting marks.
Sign that we can put it on.
We didn't have the logo on the other sign, so on this one, but we can. It's not a problem.
We got a dog on the Dog Park.
We do. And Wopsey doesn't have anything on that one, so.
That's all right.
Once again, doesn't matter to me. Just given an example.
Okay, that's a good start.
Wasn't there, wasn't there talk about buying this big stone and putting marks?
Yeah, I got an estimate on a stone. I can't remember what it was. Do you remember, Melissa?
I think, I was thinking it was eighteen, eighteen hundred. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
I didn't.
I like the sign idea. I like the sign idea actually cuz it looks like all the other signs and the two other signs anyway. Those are just my thoughts. Okay, anybody?
Yeah, I, I, I'm more in favor of the six foot sign than the eight foot sign.
I'm kinda leaning that way too. I think eight foot's awful big.
Yeah.
We're not driving down the highway. We're, we're pulling in the entrance.
You have to have six by sixes to hold it up when the wind blows.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on the size? I like the six by, six foot sign best. Jerry does.
Yeah, I'd say six foot's probably big enough. I'm assuming, are we gonna have our guys put it up?
Yes. I mean, the other parks have a four foot. I, we can do a four foot too if we wanted it that. I was just.
I think the consensus last time was this is a bigger park, more expensive park, that we should have something that's a little bigger, more, more prominent, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. So six foot sign, what would you like for wording? Anything different?
What, um, where are you proposing to put this on the park, you know?
Uh, be towards the entrance.
So like.
Right, on the right side?
Yeah.
As you pull in?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, consensus then on the six foot sign by forty-eight?
Okay.
Okay, I'm not getting any disagreements, so I guess that means we all agree.
Okay, did you want Mark's name on it or do you want to do a rock or something different?
I'd put Mark's name on it.
Okay.
As far as the logo goes, I'd like to see what the tree thing looks like.
Okay. I can do that. And then I can get you a mock-up. Hopefully they'll be faster this time. They're running, everybody's kind of running unlimited staff, so I can do that and kind of even try and superimpose it to the location it would be at. Sound okay?
You do that one more time, I bet we can make a decision.
Okay.
Make it simple.
Okay.
I guess my opinion though would be is if, if, if all this goes on there, if it gets too congested, then I would say that the Mark World Memorial would be maybe something we put maybe a stone, a small stone or something up, up somewhere around concession stand.
We can do that too.
Yeah.
We don't have to have the address on it either. It's just, everybody always asks for the address and it's nice if it's labeled, so that's why I put it on there.
That's a good idea. It would probably be a good idea. Somebody's looking.
Well, it's gonna have, need a nine-one-one address anyway.
Yeah.
So, hey, guys, I got booted off of this and just got back on.
Oh, I didn't even notice.
Give me the two seconds. What, what I missed?
We didn't, we didn't miss you.
We're, we're, we're going with the city logo?
Yeah, kind of. We're good. Melissa's gonna do one more mock-up. We agreed on the six foot sign, not the eight foot. Maybe with Cubby, with Big Timber logo. And Melissa's gonna do one more generation of a, of that and we'll see it again next time. Hopefully we can make a decision.
I'll try and do one with the city logo and then one with, if I can find marks.
Yeah, I think, yeah, give us a couple options. That way, if we go to just the, the Cubby Park thing and then do the rock with Mark, then he could, then the, his symbol could go onto the rock.
Okay.
Okay. Last comment on this, we do have three flag poles.
Yes.
You come up with a Cubby Park flag, which could be the same sort of logo.
Okay.
A Big Timber logo. That keeps running through my head. That's all we have to do about that.
But when you're saying Big Timber, are you talking about the three trees and the wavy line as part of our city logo?
It's pretty much identical, yeah.
It's very similar.
Minus the excavator that was on there. Well, it shouldn't be too hard to do.
I, if it, to me, if it, if his logo looks a lot like the West Branch logo, it's one or the other, not both.
Yeah, just use the West Branch logo.
I think, no, I mean, people get confused.
Okay. Can do that.
Okay.
And I think the third flag pole was for a West Branch flag, not necessarily, do, do we have a West Branch flag? Or a Bears flag or something? I don't know.
Not, not that I know of. That's a whole other line of decisions we got.
Okay, okay, we're going with signs, six foot, and I'll get another mock-up with the city logo on it.
I guess when the three poles were decided, somebody should have figured out what, what they were all gonna be flagged.
That's what it was for. We just.
I thought it was for the Cubs' flag.
I was gonna say, as long as the third one's not a Cubs' flag, I'll vote for it.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Item five, discussion on considering uh, local teams, a fee for local teams using Cubby Park ball field. So take it away, Melissa.
What do you weigh for?
That, that's me also. I'm not sure if we're gonna actually get ball games on the field this year, but how are, are fees are structured? Is that any non, non-West Branch team pays a fee for practicing? Normal years, that would be okay, but this year, since we've canceled most of the park and rec programs, there's not a lot of options for kids to play ball. Once again, if, if we got that. So that my thought process was maybe that would open it up if a coach wants to have a small team to practice, you know, six kids out there, they wouldn't have to worry about paying a fee. Just, just to get more kids using the fields in smaller amounts. Once again, if it ever becomes safe enough to play. That was my thought, just for this.
Sounds like a good idea. Anybody else?
Did you say this was, you're talking just for residents or non-residents?
I said residents.
Okay.
Well, I was gonna keep the non-residents fee. We have a lot of non-residents that are clamoring to use it and, um, cuz, but I, I wanna give all of our residents options and keep it as small as possible.
Sure, yeah, I'm, I agree. I think that's not a bad idea.
And then next year, hopefully it'll be a different situation.
Does everyone agree?
Okay.
That's a yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Item six. Um, regarding financial strategies for retiring the debt related to the College Street Bridge and the Second Street project. So, uh, Colton and Jody, we had this discussion with Gordon a week ago, I think it was or so, and I'm gonna have Redmond explain a couple, or Gordon explain a couple things.
Okay, I think in your packet, there was a, it's very small print, but it had the funds on the left side. The next column was the project names, the capital projects, then the water funds. And then the third column on the left side was the, the balance as of five eighteen twenty twenty, which is what I was projecting, projecting to be our fund balances today. For the College Street Bridge today, we have an eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand dollar balance. We're going to get about eighty thousand dollars yet from the state of Iowa for their grant. We're going to spend about forty-five thousand, which will leave thirty-five, forty thousand. So we'll have a balance to transfer out of the College Street Bridge of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That would go down to the College Street, Second Street Improvement Project. There's a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar in the transfer out column or in the, the transfers column. Hundred and twenty thousand is coming from the College Street Bridge. The next project is the Downtown East redevelopment, or also known as the Pearl Site. Right now, we have a balance of about sixty-nine thousand. We have an invoice that will be paid on June one of about forty-five thousand, leaving a balance as of June thirtieth of around twenty-four thousand. I don't know what we'll get for revenue. Revenue could.
Well, that, that project is pretty much self-sustaining. So we'll have a balance of twenty-four thousand-ish.
Yeah, something like that, unless, unless we get some sale of the concrete revenue, something like that.
Well, and then when the land is actually purchased, we'll get, that will go way up.
Yes, and also I think Redmond said that the state of Iowa is going to give us some grant money, Redmond. I don't, it'll be forty to, probably under fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating getting twenty-five for the demo of the buildings and, and the foundations connected to that. And we're looking at getting roughly twenty to twenty-five thousand on diverting the rock from a landfill and they, and that goes by weight of the rock. So those, those two things. And then we got five thousand in already from Bonheart on the cell of the rock and we anticipate getting more, uh, more of those in. So I'm in the process of, I gotta call in to Bruce and we'll get a little closer how much rock is currently left and how much rock we anticipate having gotten rid of before the deadline of the grant.
Okay, okay, and on the, near the bottom, on the left-hand side, we have the water fund, sewer fund, the sewer special fund, and then the storm water. We're going to get revenue for May and June, I'm projecting of ninety thousand for sewer and water and then ten thousand dollars in the storm water fund. The water fund, we're going to take fifty thousand dollars of, that'll be expensive, normal expenditures, fifty thousand. And then there'll be a normal expenditures around thirty-four thousand in the sewer fund. The transfers, I propose taking fifty thousand of the water fund, the sewer fund and the storm water fund and moving that up to the College Street, Second Street project because that project did have a lot of expenditures for sewer, storm water and water. I did ask Matt Gooddale to go through the billing with me from Taylor and there was substantially in excess of those amounts. So we should not have any problems.
The idea, the idea is then to let each one of these, the water fund, the sewer fund and the storm water fund help pay for those streets, that, those two streets, which previously we hadn't planned on. Well, this is one way to help pay for that, those two streets.
And we had expected to take a hundred thousand dollars out of road use tax, but because of the reduction in gas consumption, our taxes are gonna be less, so this will help that fund. our taxes are gonna be less, so this will help that fund. So this will leave a balance in the road use tax, pardon me, in College Street, Second Street, of around sixty-three thousand at the end of the year, which is a much more manageable amount. And then we will get TIF money next year, and that will take care of the balance. So.
And then, Gordon, aren't we, don't we get TIF money for the year after that?
We do.
Money two Septembers in a row for that? Okay, so. We, we, hold on, is there some way we can do an inter-fund, inter-fund loan? So when we get that second TIF payment, we can pay some of these funds back?
You mean through? Well, I guess, I don't know that. Yes.
Let me just keep, keep you, remind you that general fund has been, been really carrying this project, so in a way, we're gonna be making general fund whole, or getting a lot closer towards making general fund whole. So, yeah.
Because we can't wait till September to pay that other part, right?
Right.
So, okay, I get it, never mind.
Have we got one TIF payment yet?
Yeah.
The first seventy-five thousand?
Got fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
We're gonna get seventy-five thousand this year.
We'll ask for that in December?
Yeah, yes.
Which we may not see till.
We'll see in twenty, in fall of twenty-one.
A year from eighteen months from now or so.
Yeah.
That will go to, to pay the sixty-three thousand, or will that go to reimburse the general fund?
That would be going to reimburse the general fund. We advanced a hundred thousand and then a hundred and seven thousand from general fund to the College Street, Second Street project, and now we're going to pay that back with these TIF, okay, proceeds.
Okay.
So, hey, I was thinking about, so all the information we talked about last Monday, and I got an idea, I wanted to think out loud, it could be dumb, I don't know. But my, my idea was, was that we were gonna have this money left over from Cubby Park, and we were gonna put it into the Stormwater.
In the Bronic, Bronic widening.
In the Bronic widening.
Yes.
Would it be a stretch to take that money and move it to the I-80?
Can't.
Project?
I can't, because it's earmarked for parks. Any Cubby Park money, whether it's leftover or not, has to be used for a park.
Well, it could be just a loan. We might be able to get away with a loan.
Well, that's what I was thinking, we could get away with the loan for it, because we're gonna get that money back. Yeah, I mean, I know we're gonna, we're probably gonna steal some from water for that and some from sewer, but I think we might be able to scrounge up enough money to, to float that and not have to get the loan.
Well, that, that's possible, but I don't think the loan, I haven't checked with the bank, but I don't think the loan rates, interest rates should be more than three percent.
Good.
So I didn't think it would be a real substantial amount, but, but, but we should, Kevin, what are your thoughts on loaning money from those funds? For that?
I mean, you mean from the water and sewer and to the College or the Second Street?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just, no, for.
The bond proceeds from Cubby Park.
Yeah, the, the balance, if, could, could that be loaned for, on a temporary basis?
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question, first of all? Now, the bond had the, which one had the municipal improvements? Was it the, was it the bond or was it the loss?
Municipal improvements was the bond.
So you could, you should be able to use the bond proceeds to put into the, the bond proceeds should be able to be used for the College Street and Second, College Street, Second Street improvements.
But Kevin, we were wanting to use it for the I-80 widening.
Okay, you mean the, the.
Because we're gonna get that money back.
Well, here's, here's another thought. We're gonna have all this extra money in the Downtown East redevelopment. You could use some of that to, you could use some of that to offset the, the difference in the College Street, Second Street project too, once you got that money. Because they're both, they're both TIF projects, so in theory, you could use, you could use the extra money, extra money and that you're getting from TIF to pay that back too. And the money you're getting from, in from the grants and the sales and stuff like that.
Yeah, because we're trying to avoid a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loan. Even if it's short-term, if we can get away from having to do that and use inter-fund transfers, we would prefer to do that.
And that loan you're talking about, just to be clear, would be for the the I-80, underneath I-80.
Yeah.
The I-80 widening project, that's what we're kinda discussing.
So, and the state's willing to pay for it, but the fact is, they need us to pay for it upfront.
We have to pay for it first and reimburse us.
Yes.
Do they reimburse them thirty days or at the end of the project?
Well, they've been saying that they're going to have fast reimbursements, and it should happen in thirty days, and some are saying the project itself could be done in thirty days, so.
We have, we're going to receive our first twenty-three thousand dollars on the design that I submitted, oh, about a month ago, or maybe more. We're gonna receive that here this week.
So you should be able to float that.
Well, they're, they're gonna take, they're going to withhold ten percent also.
Yeah.
So that'll be four, forty-five thousand on one. I don't know what the other project, that's a hundred thousand dollar project.
And they will hold that to the end of the project.
Yes.
Okay, so we got options.
Yeah.
We got some options.
Hey, I got a question.
Yeah.
So this is, this is confusing enough in person, and it really is. It really is overwhelming via the Zoom. It's not Zooming all that well. How much longer are we gonna be meeting like this? Can we have this, this discussion again when it's a little more?
Let's talk about it, let's finish this discussion and we'll talk about it. We're almost to the end here.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Nick.
So what I don't understand, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what I don't get, and maybe Kevin can answer it, is I don't understand how the state can make us and debt ourselves for a project. Are they gonna pay us back interest then? Probably not. I mean, I don't get that. I don't understand how that's.
We'll get interest. I, I'm billing them for pretty much everything that I get billed for that says it's for I-80 widening. Now, they may come back and say I'm billing them for too much. I don't know, but I'll let them tell me when I'm billing them incorrectly, because I don't know.
Do we have an, do we have an agreement on that, Gordon, a cost share agreement?
There, you have to be an attorney to understand it, Kevin. We do have an agreement, yes. We have an agreement that says, describes, but I don't, I don't understand that it seems to be less, less clear than it should be for me.
That's kind of where.
Federal project.
Yeah, see, that's kind of where I'm confused, is I don't understa, I mean, what's stopping them from saying that, hey, this is gonna cost three billion dollars? We want you to take a three-billion-dollar loan and pay us back.
The contract said four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand.
I know, I get it, but I'm just saying, if that's legal, what stops them from triple net or quadruple net or doing whatever they want? That's kind of my question. That's what I don't get. I don't understand how they can come and make us take a loan if we don't have funds to do a project that we don't necessarily need, they need, and then potentially not pay us interest back because we had to take a loan? That's kind of my, I'm not saying I have to answer it now, but I mean, that's my question. I don't, I don't get it.
If we wanna, if we wanna talk about that in another meeting, like Colton says, maybe I can, you can send me the contract, go, Gordon and I, I can get you an answer then.
I mean, I don't have to answer it now, but that's just what I think's weird.
Kevin, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Do you want me to send you a copy?
Sure.
Okay, so as far as item six goes, we got options for College Street and Second Street. Got options there also. Looks like we've got it figured out, whittled down to maybe sixty-three thousand dollars left to pay for College Street and Second Street. That's a lot better than we thought, I don't know, two or three or four meetings ago.
Okay, so I do have one question.
Go ahead.
So, you have Wopsee Park right there, right?
Correct.
So is it not a road to get to Wopsee Park?
We'll use Cubby Park money?
I'm just asking. Yes, that's where I'm going with this.
The sidewalk, there's a sidewalk in Wopsee Park.
Right, the sidewalk runs through Wopsee Park.
That money's kind of sacred. We got plans for that money. We gotta, we gotta keep going, there's still things to buy at Cubby Park, there's, and the downstream widening's a top priority.
Well, I get that, but I mean, if we need to, we could actually use that and pay it back eventually.
Possibly.
No, yeah, I will say that has been an idea that's been tossed around before. The, the Bronic Park widening, we actually asked the bond council to take a look at it and make sure it was okay with them. We didn't do that with Wopsee, but I hear what you're saying. I think it probably could be applied, or at least in, in some position, because the sidewalk and some other things that, and it does.
The sidewalk, the sidewalk in the street are, are actually covering more area around Wopsee Park than what the creek is against Bronic Park. So we really reached out on that one.
Well, keep, keep in mind that a portion of that is including some land purchase that's going to extend the park. So that's, that's the other piece. But I think your point's well taken. I think this is, this approach is a good one. If we run into problems, we could maybe fall back at that, but I think also that there are some other things that we've been talking about.
I agree. There are, I think, yeah, there's other ways.
All right, we're gonna move on. The last item, Resolution 1899, Improving Employee Benefit Package, including short-term disability, long-term disability, and life insurance. Someone give me a motion, please.
No moves, Miller.
Open. Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Um, all right, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm not real comfortable doing this without knowing what kind of, you guys mentioned the cutting the sick time from the employees. I, I, I mean, I'm gonna vote on something, and I don't know what we're gonna end up doing against taking a pick from them.
So Jody, I know in the past, and I don't know what this particular administration's ideas were, but I know several years ago, this was brought up, and the thought was, was that more they would put limits on how much of it you got to keep. So, you know, instead of being able to keep two months of sick leave or whatever, two hundred hours of it or whatever, they would limit it to where you earned it up to X amount of hours, and then you didn't use it, you just didn't earn anymore. Because there was no sense in earning it, because you had two weeks of sick time, and then everything else to roll over to this short-term and long-term disability. And that would keep people from saving up two hundred hours of sick time or whatever, and then we'd have to pay them out at some point. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, that makes sense, what you're saying. So if I'm, if I'm not wrong, we give them, what Tom said, four hours of pay period, so eight hours a month. So around twelve, thirteen days a year, right? So basically, so say you have bronchitis, okay, or bronchitis pneumonia, whatever you wanna call it. So are you saying that you have to use all your sick time before you go to short-term disability?
No, it kicks in at seven days.
Okay, who can answer that question? Anyone?
You have to use seven days.
Yes, seven days. I think what the, I think what the, I guess the transition is, before, we didn't have those, those things, and so having sick leave built up made, made a lot of sense, even though if you were a new employee, you still were at a disadvantage. So if you were a new employee and say you, you had paternity leave, you had a baby or something like that, you, you were basically left uncovered, and, and you would basically be out of the pocket. So now that we have that coverage, we don't no, no longer need either the, the rate of accrual that we have now, or we have some type of cap, like, like Colton says, and we just cap, cap it off. Now, I think with the COVID-19, this discussion came up a little bit, because some employees kind of look at sick leave as more than just sick leave, like it's a part of the compensation, compensation package. So some may think that they're coveting the, the sick leave time, because they're gonna eventually get paid out eventually, like also what Colton said. So we'll have to probably look at how many, how many employees and what levels they are at, and if we have a cap, how many employees that might hurt. Or we may just go in and deal with the accrual aspect and, and have the accrual be much less than it is now. Well, I'm open to suggestions on that, because I, 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 I'm.
I'd say that was gonna be my next question. Are we gonna pay out? Say somebody saved up, I don't know, a hundred and fifty hours. Are we gonna pay that out and start everybody?
I think there are a lot of things that have to be discussed, Jody. I, I don't believe there's any, any decision has been made on how, how much, if there would be a payout, a reduction, or any, anything really has been determined what will happen. That's just for the future. We're gonna have to decide in the future, but not tonight.
When we start talking about this, say, in-house, would any of you like to sit? I don't know, I'd like to have a little committee, a benefits committee or whatever I call it, of one or two council people to, to listen to what staff is talking about amongst themselves. So when the time comes, I'll probably ask someone to, to sit in on a, those discussions also.
Well, I almost think we're putting the cart again, ahead of the horse then, because, I mean.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I agree.
If you can't get them to agree on something, I'm not gonna commit to giving them short-term and long-term disability and letting them bank all this, this, this vacation time and sick leave and stuff. And then they're getting, they're getting their cake and they're getting eaten too, and we just went out of position to be able to do that for them.
Yes, yes, my question would be is how, how soon do we have to approve this insurance?
Well, it needs to be effective July 1. We can, I would like to do it no later than June 1. If we don't do it tonight, I had told the insurance company that I didn't think there would be a problem and to go ahead, but we don't have any documents to sign. But I don't know that we're gonna get a decision made on how sick leave is going to be changed. That can take weeks. I don't think we'll get that decision made in the month, in the, in the two months, between now, between now and July 1. We're gonna have to get this approved.
And I almost think the vulnerability is if an employee happens to leave before, before now, and whenever we get this approved. So I don't, I mean, obviously, that could happen, but that's, that's where, when we have to pay someone out, that's when, that's when we really have some vulnerability.
Well, I guess if I'm an employee and I all of a sudden have all these extra benefits, I got this, this disability benefit, and I've got all this sick time buildup, and then the council comes back and says, all right, after this has already been voted on, comes back and says, we're gonna, we're only gonna pay you out two weeks of sick timer. I mean, that, as an employee, if I have two hundred hours buildup, that's gonna. I mean, that, as an employee, if I have 200 hours buildup, that's gonna really suck.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna be able to take away from them what they already have. I mean, I, I think what, what we probably just, I mean, at least in my opinion, I don't think that'd be right. I think we'd be better off just, uh, you know, you don't accrue no more. You, you just don't accrue no more until you get below the, the two-week threshold or whatever. That's how, and that's how we pay for their benefits, is that we're not paying them sick leave that they're not gonna use. And, and, and then if they need it, they're gonna, it's gonna be covered under their short-term disability, so they don't need that sick leave.
Well, how, how long of a timeline would we put on that? Because if somebody has hundreds of hours buildup, it might take them two or three years, or who knows how long to use up that time to get down to what we're allocating for a limit.
But Jerry, how's that hurting us? All that's doing is just putting off the money that we got paid to later instead of now. I mean, we're either gonna pay them that up now, or we're gonna pay it up to them later. So.
I don't think it's gonna take long, Jerry. I, I think if we're gonna start a process now, and it might take us three meetings, three council meetings, so that'd put us in right amount of second, maybe the second week in July.
Does this have to happen before July?
This, this benefit?
It could be effective in August.
Well, no, we, we said we wanted it effective July 1.
Yeah, I know, yeah, my, my comment, Roger, was just how long it might take for us to deal with the sick leave, the sick leave issue. That's not necessarily connected to this directly.
Can we do like a?
So, are we putting ourselves at a disadvantage if we approve this tonight or next week? Or does it matter?
I don't think it puts us at a great disadvantage if, if, we just need to move forward with getting, getting the sick leave issue addressed.
So, if we vote on this, as soon as this goes into effect, then, in my opinion, we need to have the other issue resolved. Yes.
Yes. So, so, and I thought if, if this would go effective July 1st, at, at latest, I think we would have this on the council agenda the second week in July, if not sooner. I mean, so the second week is that.
That's ambitious.
July 6 or July?
Not after it goes into effect.
There could be a short lag. Maybe there's a week or two. But again, like I said, unless you got, I don't think we have a lot of exposure during that week or two. If it goes, and that's given it a good fair amount of time to work through, and Roger wants to have some council involvement on, on some of the, the development process, and that's all good. I think if we give that all at the time that it needs, we'll still be ready in, in a month.
Leslie just pointed out that sick leave, we only pay that out when you retire, if you quit. How, how do you define retirement or quit? I mean.
Well, retirement is when you are retiring, you take your employee benefits, but quitting is just leaving to go to another job.
Quitting's, okay.
So, 65, or let's say, I can retire at 55. If I'm a legal retirement agent, I'm retiring from my job.
Then you're eligible.
We're entitled to that, but quitting is terminating employment.
Okay.
And the benefit payout, um, if you've been here, I think it was from, if you were hired after 2011, it's only 25% of what your accruals are. So, it's not 100% of my pay, it's 25% of my hourly pay for that. If it's before that, then it's 50%. So, you know, again, you're talking about only people retiring. We only have two people retiring in the next year. Um, so that's really, so you do have a little bit of time to figure this out. But this was discussed a couple of years ago when Matt Muckler was still here, how this would, because we talked about short and long-term disability at that time, how we would maybe convert some of that, either give an option to pay some of that out, or convert it to vacation. So, the employees would still feel whole. It was just, it would just be given it to them in a different manner. Because the idea of short and long-term disability is to, to protect your income, and when you don't have anything to protect your income, it does put the employee in a disadvantage.
I don't know, I'm gonna be, take a hard line here. I was on the council originally when a long-term employee, uh, retired, and the city wrote him a check for almost, right, pretty close to $20,000. And the reason being is they had all this sick time all banked up, and, and we, we as a council decided we're not gonna do that anymore, and capped it at 400 hours. Now, the way I look at it is that sick leave is a self-funded um, insurance program by, by the city that we give to our employees. This insurance program that was presented to us will be an insurance program self, self-funded by the city. So, basically, um, I've seen this as a duplicate benefit for the employees. So, something has to give. Either we go with this long-term, or we continue down the road that we're going down now, and, and give them sick leave.
And Tom, just to add to that, I worked in employee benefits for 25 years. So, we're, and I worked for a company who we, we were a benefit administrator. So, our sick banks, we did receive sick, sick pay, uh, sick time, but it was capped at 10, I'm sorry. I think we got 10 days per year, and it expired at the end of the, at the end of December 31st. If you didn't use it, it started all over. It, um, it did go away each year. So, basically, you didn't, it didn't carry over, it didn't build up. And the purpose of my giving 10 days was to make sure you had coverage for getting to that short-term disability, meaning that seven-day elimination period. So, it made the employee, um, use your sick leave appropriately, not abuse it, but then still had that protection if they actually did have a catastrophic illness or injury.
Exactly, and I don't, I, I don't know of any other employer that pays out sick leave at, at, um, uh, retirement. I, I know the city of Corvill doesn't, and I, and I'm not sure about Iowa City.
Iowa City is not either. They do not have.
I know the federal government doesn't, and I'm pretty sure the state doesn't either.
Well, the state of Iowa, when I left the University Hospital, I had, I was paid for $2,000 of sick time. And if you multiplied the number of hours, I had like over 1,000 hours accumulated. And if you multiply that times the hourly rate, it was $35,000 plus, and I got paid $2,000 for it. I wasn't hurt. The, the company made money when they got rid of me, writing off that liability and paying me $2,000.
Okay, so back to this particular item. I still think we're at no disadvantage if we approve this tonight. As long as we can get some sort of resolution, we will have about two months, I figure, of the benefits. Am I right or wrong?
I, I think, I think we should pass it tonight and work on what council wants to do with the sick, with the conversion of sick time. Okay. I don't think that.
And it hasn't been budgeted, the conversion of sick time for everybody right now, because right now, that does cap at 560 hours. There are a few people that are close to that or at it, and each, according to our employee handbook, at 560 hours, and the second paycheck in October, I pay out 50% or 25%, whatever that is. Anything, anything above 560 hours, that person gets an extra paycheck that, that month, or that difference. That's kind of a administrative little pain that I have to do every year, because it's sometimes it's five hours, or sometimes it's 30 hours. It's just sometimes it's not worth the extra work to do that. So, it is capped at 560 hours, but so there, there's things to adjust in, in, in the process, for sure.
I missed a lot of what Leslie said, something about 530 hours.
Um, right now, um, in our employee handbook, sick leave is capped at 560 hours. So, well, I'm sorry, it still accrues after 560 hours, but per our employee handbook, once you reach 560 hours that October, I cut a check to that employee for the, anything above 560 hours at the rate of, um, either 50% or 25% based on their date of, date of hire.
560 hours, that's 70 days.
Yes.
78-hour days.
Yes.
That's like.
Two months vacation pay.
Yeah, vacation.
So, that's the purpose of short and long-term disability, because it's insurance. Not everybody uses.
I was.
You only use it when you need it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Banking up the time and holding it.
Because long-term kicks in at 90, so essentially, if they have 560 hours, they only get 70 days, and after that, they get literally nothing.
Right.
I hope you have vacation.
Or we can fire them, because they're not showing up to work. So, I mean, in the long run, this is way more advantageous to us.
Yeah, short-term disability encourages an employee to come back to work, otherwise, because their, their, their pay right now is at a, at, at sick leave, you get paid 100% of your hourly wage, or whatever salary wage. With disability, with this particular plan, is 60% of your gross wages. So, it encourages you to, if you have your surgeries, come back to work, and not just keep using all of your sick time. So, there's an advantage. It just, what didn't happen was, we got the disability, but we didn't get the short, or we didn't get the sick leave figured out at the same time. The sick leave needs to be adjusted. That was something we knew all along that needed to be addressed. It just didn't get addressed by this effective date.
And then my question was gonna be, not to complicate things, but if we don't have a policy in for their sick time, and I'm not sure if, if we adopt the short-term disability, and say, it takes us all of July to come up with a sick time policy, I don't know if, if they're gone for seven days, does short-term disability automatically kick in? Or can they just say no, and I'll just use my sick time? I mean, surely they can't do both.
They can use sick time for the first seven days.
And then automatically have to do short-term?
Yeah, then it kicks into short-term.
Well, I, I wouldn't wanna write a check to somebody if, if I have an insurance policy on that employee that pays them disability after seven days. I would only do one.
Yeah, I would hope. That's just wanted to make, I'm just trying to think, if we were to lag and not get it done, what would, nightmare office-wise could we run into?
On the eighth day, insurance picks it.
Yeah. Mandatory. Yeah. As far as I'm concerned, it's mandatory.
Sick leave up until the seven days, eighth day, they're covered by short-term disability.
Mandatory, short-term cover.
Yes.
Yeah, let me just tell them they can't use sick days anymore.
Right. Okay, well, that's a plan.
That would be the, that would be the, what we'd have to deal with if we didn't get it done.
Okay. Trying to come to a resolution on this. Is, we ready to vote on this? I still don't see that any big disadvantage of us approving it now. I guess, uh, you guys can vote accordingly. If this is turned down, can we bring it up next time?
Well.
I, I can, or a council person can.
I guess.
And then it's gotta be a.
Kevin, who can bring it up if it fails tonight?
Any council.
Somebody who voted against it, or since everybody's here, only somebody voted against it.
Can bring it up next time?
Yes, if it fails.
Please don't let it fail.
I.
Sure about that?
Yes, I am.
I voted no for something a couple of years ago, because I knew it was gonna fail, and I wanted to bring it back. So, I voted no for it, so then I could bring it back.
That's what I was just gonna ask. I mean, if you have a rolling opinion, it's no, I'm gonna vote no to bring it back.
Well, in a different form.
Yeah, but the thing is, we're, it's gonna be probably impossible for us to have a short-term, I mean, a, a, a sick leave policy next, or next cycle. So.
Yeah, we need at least two months. We can't get it done in.
In two weeks.
So, that was gonna be my question. Do we have to enact it by July 1, or can we enact it in October?
Well, the quote from the insurance company is effective July 1.
They already told us the rates won't go up.
Well, that's for this quote, that's effective July 1. If we say it's gonna be effective August 1, I would hope they wouldn't do anything, but I can't guarantee that they wouldn't change rates.
I guess, well, my question is, why do we think it's gonna take two months to figure out? Why do, I mean, if, if we had some kind of a guarantee that in a month, that this issue could be solved, then.
One month, yeah.
I don't think it's an issue of voting on this tonight, like you say, but I don't want this to drag out for two or three months. Because it's not, it doesn't get, doesn't get resolved.
So, the other thing we could do is table this until we get a, a, a benefits plan at the same time. Table this, or.
I, I don't believe that it's gonna take staff, uh, that long, but if council wants to be involved, working through schedules and all, could take a, could take a week or two. Um, but I don't think we, I don't think it's gonna necessarily take staff to come up with solutions. And we can come up with options, and there's probably several options you can come up with, but if, if you wanna be more a part of the organic end of this, um, with some kind of committee that hasn't been formed yet, I think that could take a little, uh, time.
I mean, I don't know if it's really gonna be that hard. I mean, you could spitball one right now. You'd set it at 10 days, and you pay them at whatever the 50 or 25 is for whatever when they got hired, for what's left over 10. Just did it.
Yeah, I mean, really, honestly, the, the research, just figuring out where employees are right now, and coming up with a solution that doesn't hurt as many people, and.
Doesn't matter where employees are now, because we're not taking anything away from anybody.
Yeah, we're just gonna set a limit.
We're.
If they haven't. And like Colton said, would they just burn them up until they get it down to the limit?
Yeah, we, we could set a limit, and I heard something about converting, if you are over whatever limit we set, convert that to maybe vacation hours, or some kind of, some kind of payout, and then start it, start everybody at that point. I just don't know yet. We just haven't sat down and worked it through yet. But I don't think it's gonna take that long unless, um, unless we wanna form committees and things like that. That's. I, I give.
The more people we give input to, the longer this is gonna take. If, if the five of us, and you know, if we sit down in a council meeting with six ideas and says we're leaving with one of these ideas, and this is just the way it's gonna be, well, I like it, you know, that's, that's how it happens fast.
Another approach that just came to me, if council's really interested in this, maybe we could do a work session somewhere in between there. Everybody gets a chance to put their two cents.
Why is this so hard? Can't we just figure this out?
Let's table this. I would say we table this till next time. Let Redmond come up with his best proposal for the next meeting.
I would say he comes up with a couple of options.
Couple of options.
Exactly.
I'd say two weeks should be enough to come up with a couple.
I'm afraid if this fails tonight, we're, we're screwed for a while. Okay. Some of you are not gonna vote for it tonight.
And at the end of the day, guys, I think it really is in our, in the city's best interest to do this, but it's not in our best interest to do both, and we need to make sure that we take care of part B before we give them part A.
Okay, I agree. So, I'm here, and let's table it tonight. Uh, let's just go with a table, and then, uh, I'll have options, three options by July 1. Three, sounds good.
No, we need to have the options available July 1 or the 18. I, I, I think we need to.
That's what I said.
Has to be our goal, so.
Our next meeting is July, oh, no, I'm sorry, I said July, I meant June.
All right, yeah, that'll work.
I'm sorry. My bad.
Next meeting is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, who's, who, who did the motion? Miller?
Yeah.
Wanna receive the motion?
I take my motion back. My motion back, I wanna table it.
I gotta vote on that, Kevin, how do we do that?
No, just, just move on. Technically, you're supposed to postpone it till the next meeting, so take a vote.
Does that mean the motion is still alive at the next meeting, or?
You, you, all you're doing is postponing till the next meeting, just have a discussion next meeting. Or postpone it, actually no, postpone it to a future meeting, so that you have the part B in place.
I'm officially gonna say this, uh, resolution eighteen ninety-nine will be, uh. Considered at a future meeting, reconsidered at a future meeting.
Good, no.
You wanna agree?
I move.
Not a motion, thank you. Okay.
And then, and then item eight, we're, we're pulling that item to next meeting as well.
What was that?
Item, item eight is, is being pulled to next meeting.
Item eight is not, uh, being considered tonight, it will be considered at a future meeting. Okay, um.
Just make sure you have your choices before this item.
Yeah. Good idea. Let's talk about it right now, we gotta keep doing this, we gotta meet in person.
I think one more meeting.
One more.
I think one more meeting, I've been following the, the new cases average, um, in Iowa. Last, uh, week before last, there was three hundred and ninety-eight new cases. It averaged three hundred and ninety-eight new cases a day. Uh, last week, it was three hundred and eighty-four new cases. Be interesting to see how this opening up. Of the state is gonna go, I think it's gonna end up as a disaster. And, and I, that's just my personal opinion, but I'd like to see us do one, at least one more meeting.
Okay, any other thoughts, anyone else?
I, I, I have to disagree with Tom on this one, I, I think we should. I think we can get more done if we're all into one meeting at a time. And I, and the reason we got so many extra tests, we got more tests going on, that's why we're showing more results.
Don't we still have to stay?
Now, that, that's, I, Jerry, that's, that's the ironic thing, we don't know how many, how many people they're testing. We can't get those figures.
Anybody else?
Don't we still have to stay under ten?
Say that again.
We still have to be under ten people, I, I think the ten people is still part of the opening, so for now.
So right now, we have more than ten people in this meeting.
Well, I, actually, I don't think that's true, they're, they're opening restaurants and they're allowing more than ten people in restaurants at a time. Lots of restaurants have ten people work there.
Yeah.
Fifty percent occupancy on them, so.
Yeah. I think that's just, that's a different reg, um, Colton, because.
I don't know, but I thought it was gatherings still under ten.
Yeah, I, I think she had both. But I can, I can look and, you know, get everybody up to, up to speed. I know, um, Melissa might be following it even closer than I have. Melissa, you got any idea of where the governor is now?
I thought it was still groups under ten, but I don't know what the regulations are in regards to public meetings. Um, restaurants are different, they have different regul- regulations, but like even outside. Um, sporting events or practices are still ten and under, so.
That's.
That wasn't helpful, sorry.
Well, I, I kinda recall we're along that line as well still, but.
My, my one thought was we would stay this way until June first, which would be the next meeting. I guess I'm with Tom, we, one more meeting. However, I'm here, we got, if somebody wants to come in, I don't have a problem with it.
I just say, we're getting, it's taken us twice as long to get half as much done this way. And then half the time we leave the meeting not getting it done anyway.
Can, can we, can we space out the table?
Yeah, we could, we can space out. We really, we can do that.
It's a big room.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, I'm okay, I don't mind it, it's just whether or not I'd like to know if we can.
Now, I guess my question would be, Kevin, can we have it not closed session, but closed to the public? It could be available to them Zoom, so we could have it Zoomed, set up. So if somebody wanted to talk or see what was going on, it could be Zoomed like live, but, but we're in the same, you know. It's just the six of us are in the room or, or whatever, and it's not really open to the public, is that something we can do?
Well, as long as they can have access, as long as everybody can listen to it and have an access to make comments, you should be able to figure something out. I mean, you, you six could be there and the staff could be scattered somewhere else.
Yeah, we can do that.
Kevin, you could stay at home, Gordon?
Yeah.
Gordon or Leslie, only one of them needs to be here. I think we could be under ten in this room.
Yep.
Based appropriately. I'm fine with that, if anybody else is okay with it.
It gets my vote.
I can go for it.
Oh, I get.
Okay, and it would still be a Zoom meeting, however, I would propose it still be Zoom, published as a Zoom meeting.
That'd be fine.
Public can log in.
I guess the other thing is, is any member felt uncomfortable and did not wanna attend, they can feel free to Zoom from home.
Right. Yeah.
And I can stay at home, make sure there be one less people and just zoom in.
Yeah, you're just as useful at home as you are here.
Whoa.
Ouch.
Ouch.
We still need you, Kevin.
It's all out of love.
It's mic drop time.
All right, uh, we'll work on that for next time. Uh, Redmond, city administrator report.
Yes, I'm definitely reading the temperature that I need to be quick, so I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I actually emailed it, uh, to everyone, it's in email and it's online. I did wanna speak, uh, just a bit about the, the wastewater, because, um, Roger asked me about it. And I wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. We're, we're moving, uh, forward on a two-pronged approach. So there's, there's, we're not holding off on our SAG-AR process, even though we know that's gonna cost us seven point seven, at least million. Uh, we are, we're, we're moving forward and B and K has the direction to continue to move forward in that, in that regard. And, um, I, uh, actually had, had visited, uh, well, I talked with Dave a little, long, a little while ago. Um, about when we needed to move forward, uh, with the, our, uh, SRF process. So that we can start, um, uh, getting a loan for the design portion of that. He told me not quite yet, so, um, we're, we're cooling our heels a little bit on that, waiting for V and K to work with the state on some things. Uh, and at the same time, we're still continuing to, um, explore the Baldridge environmental. And, um, I guess there's been some developments there, um, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Dave about it just yet. But apparently, um, University of Iowa has, has gotten, become aware of, of the Baldridge environmental process. And, um, they're interested in joining, um, with Baldridge. And they also have been having some communications with DNR. And at least the way it's being presented to me, that there might be an opportunity that we can get. Uh, a sanctioned pilot project, which could hold us off from, uh, anywhere from, uh, two to even possibly three years. Um, is what has been reported to me. I'm gonna see if all that is, um, but that sounds kinda exciting. And also I think, uh, Iowa Innovation Authority is also involved in this. So maybe Baldridge is really getting some, some steam, uh, up. Um, he did get, um, okay to move forward with, um, and I think I reported this before, with the pilot project in, in, in Middleville or Middleton. So, uh, Middletown, Iowa, so there might be some synergy there. But, um, officially, we're moving, we're moving down both, both, um, both, um. Uh, avenues, so, so that we don't get too far behind, um, on, uh, what our current state mandates are. So, um, that and, um, we've been, um, moving forward with, um, um, putting in our, our grant. Uh, for, um, the COVID nineteen in, uh, Economic Development Grant and, um, ECIA. And I wanna say Citco as well have, uh, done real good with, uh, picking up the pieces while, uh, I've been dealing with family emergencies. So, um, that I just talked on today, we seem to be online, ready to go. Um, and, um, hopefully that will be getting out, um, getting out soon. Uh, that, that grant application, so. Also, we got support from our, our industrial community, uh, plastic products, um, US Ventures or US Auto Force. Um, we, we got, um, some good news from P and G. I might, this might be old news, because I told Roger, and Roger already knew about it. But, uh, P and G is, is staying out there, they are, um, launching a new beauty product line. And they're gonna need the facility from, for, uh, the, the current to the now, uh, fut- distant future. So, uh, they've actually asked us not to try and market it any longer. And, uh, they plan on being, being here, so, uh, that's great, because we're gonna finally get some full assessments out of those folks. Um, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be good, and, um, hopefully that will help us, um, through some of the COVID nineteen shortfalls that we're seeing. Um, so I just wanna kinda update you on that, um. And we've been doing pretty doggone decent with, um, uh, getting grants. So we did get a twenty-five thousand dollar food pantry grant. Um, and I talked about some of our businesses getting grants. I, I think I, I didn't mention, but, um, Scattergood Friend, uh, Scattergood Friendship School actually got a forgivable loan of a hundred and sixty thousand. So hopefully the love keeps on coming to our area as we, uh, as we try and get this, um, uh, big grant, uh, for our wastewater. Uh, we talked about Bond Heart already, so we got that invoice for forty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And we, uh, and we did get, um, a payment of five thousand, uh, five thousand dollars for payment on rocks so far. And we're waiting for more of that. So that's really it, I'm gonna tie, tie you up, and if there's any other questions on anything else I got there, please feel free to give me a call.
Okay. Any other staff? Kevin?
I just looked it up, it's the, uh, prohibition on ten ends at eleven fifty-nine on May twenty-seventh. So, next Wednesday, uh, the ten-person gathering expires unless she extends it.
Interesting. Okay, so, um, we will plan on meeting here. Next time on June first. Unless you're uncomfortable, it will still be a Zoom meeting to keep the public, uh, at bay. That doesn't sound very good. But, uh, the public is welcome to attend via Zoom. Is anybody else? Motion to adjourn, so.
So moved.
Second.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Jury, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you next time, June first.